Okay. Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Special meeting of council Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025. I'd like to acknowledge we are located within the territory of Mi'kmaq, the unceded ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people. Just before we get to approval of the agenda, I just wanted to say a few words about the meeting process and bylaw number 2022-03, a bylaw respecting the proceedings of Tantramar Municipal Council in committee meetings. We have a lot of presentations to get through and a motion concluding the meeting, and I want to ensure that the presenters, staff, and council members have a chance to say what they want to say in a respectful and meaningful way. So for council, staff, and the public to know, our bylaw clearly states that no person in the audience at a council or committee of the whole meeting shall engage in conduct that disrupts the orderly conduct of any council or committee of the whole meeting, including but not limited to the utterance of loud, threatening, or abusive language, whistling, clapping, stamping of feet, repeated waving of arms, or other disruptive acts. Further to this, the bylaw states no signs, placards, or banners shall be permitted in the council chamber of the committee meeting room. This is an important meeting in the early days of Tantramar's budget process, and we can all do our part by making sure that it runs smoothly with engaged conversation, but always out of a place of appreciation and respect. So, thank you, everyone. Moving on to number two, approval of the agenda. So there is a motion for the approval of the agenda, but we do have 4B, Sackville Festival of Early Music, that they are not coming this evening. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve the agenda as amended, if a councillor could read that. Deputy Mayor Estorix.
Thank you, Mayor Black. I move that council approve the agenda of the special meeting of council of September 23rd, 2025, as amended.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Estorix, seconded by Councillor Martin. Call for the question? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Number three, disclosure of conflict of interest. So any conflict of interest from staff or council for the agenda as presented? Seeing none? Okay. Public presentations, 2026 budget. So we have a bunch to get through. Each of the presenters who are here will have five minutes to present. We will have a timer. It will go off. We're trying not to make it too loud, so it's disruptive or aggressive. After that five minutes, council will have an opportunity to ask questions, which of course will give you more of an opportunity to talk about what you want to talk about. We do have, at the end of it, other public budget presentations of two minutes. So that's basically just open for someone to come up to the mic for two minutes, and that would be timed as well. So 4A, Marshlight Theatre Company, Sue Rose.
I had some slides. And I don't know how to work the remote.
You can say, I think you can say next, and we can skip it for you, if that's okay.
Oh, okay, perfect. Okay. First of all, I want to thank you for holding this meeting and welcoming us all here, because in doing this, you create community. So thank you for doing that. My name is Sue Rose. I'm the artistic director of Marshlight Theatre in Sackville. Last year, Sackville's two longstanding theatre companies, Live Bait and Performers Company, amalgamated to create a new community-based professional theatre, Marshlight. You can go next. In 2024-25, we produced three successful mainstage shows. The Return of Grace opened in Sackville and then toured to Fredericton, St. Andrews, and Harvey. I'd like to take this opportunity to apologize to Grace Mowit for that photograph. It's the best one we could find. And next. Our newly renovated space at the corner of Fairfield in Queen seats 40 people. A mainstage show like Dirty Blonde ran for eight performances with a total of 320 audience members, bringing folk from Moncton and Amherst. And next. Our third show, The Glass Menagerie, again brought audiences from far and wide. All our work has contributed to our local economy by bringing patrons to our restaurants and hotels. Marshlight also supports our local businesses by purchasing supplies for our productions. And next. The mission of Marshlight is to serve our community by presenting entertaining and engaging productions. We seek to serve, and we seek to be remarkable. And next. Our upcoming 2025-26 season will present three mainstage shows, and Matthew is excited about it. And next. We'll be highlighting Canadian playwrights and professional local directors. Small Things, a lighthearted comedy by Daniel MacGyver. And next. Late Company, a serious drama by Jordan Tannahill. And next. The Fixer Upper, a hilarious comedy by Lorne Elliott. And next. In addition to the shows we present, we seek to create a performance hub in Sackville, accessible to other groups in our community, like the Drama Queens, Festival by the Marsh, and professional companies from away like Solo Chicken from Fredericton. I might also say we'd like to establish a young company that would be open to teenagers who are interested in theatre, that we could help to train so that they can enter theatre professions. Next. We provide opportunities for development for individuals in their creative work and behind-the-scenes skilled theatre workers by holding workshops during the year and a festival of new works every spring. Our quality programming and support of local performing artists qualifies us to receive major capital grants from the province. And next. Recent studies have found a return on investment of one to four coming back to communities from the activities of the cultural sector in New Brunswick. $1 invested in the New Brunswick cultural sector generates a $4 return through job creation, infrastructure development, which we could talk about more, tourism, and community enhancement. Your investment in Marshlight will generate returns for Sackville businesses and the wider community. And next. Our first show as Marshlight in the spring of 2024, Weird Sisters, was a smashing success and brought audience from across the region. And next. That's me in the pointy hat, along with Alison Bernardi and Susan Amis. And next. But there are a lot of people involved in the production of a show onstage and off, cast and crew. And next. To us, though, the most important people are the audience that we seek to serve and create something remarkable for. We hope you will support us in this endeavor, as you have in the past so generously. Thank you.
Well done. Excellent presentation.
Yes.
Very succinct, to the point. The slides were amazing. I feel bad that I was actually at a farmer's market and was asked by, I think, the director of The Dirty Blonde if I would be one of the performers in the show.
Oh.
Never acted before in my life, but she said, "I see something in you," but I wasn't able to do that because I didn't have enough time to be able to commit.
Well, sir, the door is always open, and I will say that to everyone gathered here. The door is open. We welcome. So when you see the auditions come open, please.
And at the time, she explained some of the people who were involved in that production, and they were mostly names that I had recognized from our community, which is just wonderful. So I guess I have to ask, and I should have mentioned this at the beginning of this, it's nice if you have an ask when you come forward, and I assume maybe the ask is for us to continue to support you, maybe through the community grant formula that we usually have.
Yes. Yes, we will be applying for an operational grant.
Okay, so through that application process. Okay. Any other asks? I mean, you have this opportunity in front of us, not to put you on the spot.
Well. The more resources we have, the more sponsorship we have, the better and the more programming we can do. So all I'll say is that when we file the operational grant, we'll be specific about the programs that we would like to present and the funding that will be required. We get funding from other sources, from the province, from the McCain Foundation, from local businesses, for which we're really thankful. So yes, we'll be more specific in our grant application.
And, you know, this is operational, but I might throw it out there to staff, maybe some connection with communications, so we can attempt to put it in our newsletter if you have something going on, or we do have a signboard at the Civic Centre that maybe we could do something there, too.
Sure. Yeah, that'd be great.
As a resource, but anyway, that's it for me. I apologize, council. Any questions, comments from council?
Okay.
Okay. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
So 4B, as I said, Sackville Festival of Early Music, decline to come. 4C, Seniors for Climate Change, Penny Mott.
Good evening, Mayor Black, town councillors and staff. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak with you. My name is Penny Mott. It's M-O-T-T, and I live in Sackville. I'm representing Seniors for Climate Tantramar this evening. We're a small group of men and women who've joined together to pursue the work of a growing climate action movement across Canada. I will share with you the main messages of the Seniors for Climate movement. We're in a climate emergency. We need to act. Later is too late. We must phase out the use of fossil fuels. Climate change is affecting our health, extreme heat, wildfires, floods, storms, and droughts. Action on climate must be intergenerational and intersectional, joining with youth, First Nations, the disadvantaged, and equity-seeking populations. We're all in this together. We need to speed up the transition to renewable power and clean energy, and we must try to stop our government's banks and pensions from aggravating the climate crisis. Seniors for Climate Tantramar began here in Sackville one year ago by holding an event in the Bill Johnstone Memorial Park that highlighted green burial as an alternative to cremation for the end-of-life planning. It was like a last effort to reduce greenhouse gas emissions on a personal level. Since then, we have become more visible in the community by linking up with 18 local environmental organizations and four other provincial sites of Seniors for Climate. Knowing that many people are experiencing climate anxiety, we have held climate chats at the visitor's centre. And this past weekend, Seniors for Climate Tantramar made quite a splash at Fall Fair. At this point, I want to express our gratitude to the town, and especially Matt Pride and Jessica Wilson, who were very welcoming when we approached them about participating in the Fall Fair activities. And then their support was absolutely tremendous as we planned our participation. Also, I'd like to thank you to the councillors who visited the Climate Corner on Saturday. We had close to 30 cyclists in the parade, displaying climate action banners. We had walkers and puppets carrying signs, and the Red Rebels danced their way down our streets. At the Climate Corner on Dufferin Street, we had 10 environmental groups, including Tantramar's Advisory Committee on Climate Change, who set up displays and activities to promote climate awareness. We feel there was a significant interest at these tables over the course of the day. We were thrilled that our own Quinn McCaskill attended the Climate Atlantic display. I would like to read to you some of her words at a Seniors for Climate rally on Earth Day this spring. "This is exactly the kind of thing we need more of. We are at our most powerful when we're united, acting together in pursuit of our common vision for the future. This is the moment where we choose our opportunity to build a better world, to build a way of living that is compatible with Earth's ecological systems. There's no time to wait for politicians and leaders to make the first move. We must act now. We must lead the way and show the people in power what kind of world we want to live in. The power to respond to the climate emergency is in our hands. Let's keep the momentum going." As she completed her speech, I'm telling you, there was a huge round of applause. So my request for funding is based on our belief that we are offering our community important information and opportunities to be engaged with the climate situation. At this point, we don't incur large costs, but we do feel our work is beneficial to this community and does deserve some financial support. So thank you for your consideration of our request.
Well done. Six seconds left.
I was a teacher, Andrew.
Excellent presentation. Thank you very much. I walked up and down the tables that were set up in the Climate Corner, and I stopped and talked with Doug Bliss, the Chair of the Climate Change Advisory Committee, for a little while, and Samara Eaton as well. The times that I was at the field, it seemed like the booths were all very, very busy. So well done. So again, your ask, you're going to be, is the Seniors for Climate Tantramar, are they going to be making an application through the community grant?
Yes, I think so.
Funding? Okay. Excellent. Okay. Questions, comments from council? There you go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. 4D, well, 4D and E, but we'll separate them out into two, of course. The Drama Queens, Alaska Cashion.
Would it be okay if I accompanied her?
Of course.
Good evening, members of council. Thank you for having us. My name is Magali Sharon, and together with my partner Vincent Cashion, I lead the Drama Queens, Sackville's very own pre-teen theatre troupe. In just three short years, the Drama Queens have grown from a fun backyard experiment into a thriving creative outlet for young people. We had our debut at Sapi Fest 18 with our first original musical, A Beep in Time. The following year, we were invited to return to Sapi and created Chips the Musical, complete with a soundtrack released on Spotify and Bandcamp. This past year, we have been workshopping our biggest project yet. It's called All Bottled Up, a one-hour original comic musical about the probiotics, viruses, and aliens living inside a water bottle, whose bitter squabbles are upended when the bottle's owner takes a drink. Maybe you can relate. We had a successful workshop performance in August, and we are partnering with the Marshlight Theatre to give our young performers the experience of performing at a real theatre during the first weekend of December. Get your tickets. Learning essential writing, performance, and art skills all along the way. Our troupe currently features 15 young performers, and it's unique in Sackville. It's the only program where kids age 18 to 14 can write, dance, act, sing, build sets, design costume, and even record original music together. With your support, we've been able to nurture these talented kids, and the results have been really inspiring.
Hello, I'm Alaska, and I'm one of the Drama Queens. I want to start by saying thank you for helping to fund the creation of our new musical last year with a special event grant. Your sport made a big difference. So I bet you're all wondering what it's like to be in our troupe. We start our classes each week with improv, come up with silly characters, and figure out how to make them all work together to tell a story. Sometimes we predict the future with our oracle game, or sometimes we argue about whether aliens can really tap dance. And spoiler alert, they can in our world. And here's a bonus. I get to say my songs are on Spotify, so yeah. But despite being a major recording artist, I still have to take out the compost.
Yeah, and clean your room, right? What Alaska is describing is the reason why this program matters to our community. It's not just theatre. It's confidence-building, teamwork, literacy, problem-solving, and leadership training rolled into one. The Drama Queens offers a place for Tantramar's creative-minded kids to belong and grow. With support from the town council, the Drama Queens could improve our props, costumes, musical soundtracks, continue our partnership with the Marshlight Theatre, fairly compensate our teachers, lower fees for parents, and expand the troupe to welcome even more young participants.
And now. I'd like to say thank you so much for letting us do this presentation. Thank you.
Well done. Again. Oh, you can just stay at the mic.
They might have questions.
Just in case there's questions. And I want to thank you, especially Alaska, for coming in and presenting. It's not often that we have younger Tantra Martians, let's call ourselves, coming to the mic in civic engagement, and it's really, really great to see. Most of the time, when young Tantra Martians do come, they do a fantastic job, and you have certainly done an amazing job in presenting. So thank you so much. Again, the ask, you're going to be submitting within the community grant application again?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, excellent. Any other asks, other than just continued support, I would assume? Oh, I do have a question. I apologize. So you're on Spotify, so that must mean that you make a whole bunch of money from sponsorships and...
Point 0000001 cent.
Well, I mean, it's a start. Excellent presentation. Questions and comments from council? Councillor Butcher?
Hi, thank you very much, especially to Alaska. I don't know you, Alaska, yet. Yet. So I'm Alison, and I'm glad to meet you. And the picture that was up there, I know a lot of the Drama Queens, and I think that you guys are a fabulous group. My question is, how do I find out when your performances are and where I can get tickets?
I'm going to answer that. It's on the Marshlight Theatre website, and the show, the public shows that will be performing, well, they will be performing, will be on the 5th, 6th, and 7th. There'll be four shows.
Of December.
Of December. Yes. Sorry about that.
And once again, maybe coordinating with communications. Maybe we can, again, like we have a newsletter, we've got ways for us to be able to push out community groups doing projects like this. So maybe we can make a connection there, too, so that the municipality can support you in advertising efforts in a way.
Oh, that's great. Thank you. Yeah.
Okay. Oh, Councillor Frey?
Thank you for coming. Like the mayor said, we don't have young people coming here very often, so it's a pleasure. And like Councillor Butcher said, I've never heard of you before, to be honest with you. So now I'm looking forward to going to the performances as soon as I go on the website and everything. I remember your mother from years ago, as a matter of fact.
Me? Oh, oh, yeah. I thought you meant my mom.
No, I remember your mom too, because she worked for the town. But I remember you, and I believe you played violin.
Yes, I still do.
Do you still play?
Oh, yeah.
Do you play at some of these performances?
No, not this one. I play with my band.
When is your band?
Oh, well, that's on our website.
I'll find that out from you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I guess you may as well stay up at the mic.
She's going to be presenting again.
4E, Queens Road, Sackville, Alaska Cashion again.
So, this is just me now. So now I'd like to present children's safety on Queens Road. So, yeah. Queens Road has been a little dangerous for pedestrians, walkers, cyclists, or even just people walking around or running. And we want to feel safe on our road. So we want portions of Queens Road to have a sidewalk. Yeah, so.
I don't know. Do we have to change it ourselves?
Oh, you can, yeah, you can just say, if you need us to switch it, just say, "Next slide, please."
Okay, next slide, please. After that. Yeah, that's good. Thank you. So this is the portion of Queens Road we want a sidewalk, and these are the people living on Queens Road. So there are about, like, 38 buildings, and some with many apartments, and there are some areas that could have more buildings in the future. And these are our existing problems. We have trucks from the quarry. Next slide, please. No, more. Yeah, that one's good. So we have trucks from the quarry on that map right there. You can see the quarry. So there are trucks coming from the quarry into Queens Road and speeding. There are also trucks, logging trucks, coming from Route 935 from Rockport, also speeding through Queens Road. And finally, we have Highway 106 that cars are coming through there and still thinking they're on the highway when they cut through Queens Road. So, yeah. And next slide, please. This is an example of a quarry truck. Next slide. And that's another quarry truck. Next slide. And so this is the part of, oops, Queens Road that we need the sidewalk, high volume of pedestrians. So there is a high volume of pedestrians. There's families, children, elderly, cyclists, runners, and pedestrians, also customers from the local auto shop, Blair Lynn, that are putting their cars there and having to walk back to their house in town. And. Next slide. After that one. And after that one.
Does the video work on that one?
Yeah. Yeah, okay. So, next, please. And here, we have a zoning map. And the blue area that's outlined with green, that is a subdivision, a 15-lot subdivision, that will have, it will be, yeah, so we recently found out that there will be a 15-lot subdivision there. And there will be a lot more people coming on Queens Road that need a sidewalk. And next to that are the details. And, yeah, so on Queens Road also, I'd like to mention that vehicles are supposed to go at 50 kilometers an hour, but they go at 70 to 80. So we think a sidewalk would slow the cars down and make it much safer for our growing Sackvillean neighbourhood. Thank you.
Well done. Again.
Thank you.
I spent most of my young adult, oh, young adult, young kid life, living on Queens Road. My parents live a few houses up from where you guys live, I believe. And it was busy then, and it's busy now. I used to walk to school every day from my parents' house, and it was busy then, it's busy now. Do you, so the pictures of the person on the side of the road, was that you?
No.
Okay.
No, that wasn't me.
Do you bike?
I do bike. Yeah.
Okay. So I think I've seen you biking on that road. So the ask is sidewalks, and you said portions of it, but are there specific sections, or is it sort of like where the sidewalk ends now, going down a certain distance down Queens Road?
Yeah, so, okay. Do you know the fork in the road? Yeah, so, okay, do you know the fork in the road? That's like, there's one road that's going to Rockport, and the other one's going to Dorchester?
Yep.
That's where we want the sidewalk to end.
Okay.
And the other end would be where the current sidewalk ends.
Right.
Yeah.
You made some great points, talking about pedestrian use, talking about speed being a concern. You also talked about the subdivision, which council passed a motion to have that subdivision in there, two new streets, more cars. It's not density downtown, so the intention would be that people would probably be driving from that spot. Maybe they'd be more likely to drive downtown, but maybe they would turn the other way and come down Queens Road towards Westcock. So, again, excellent presentation, and you brought up some really great points. So the ask is for a sidewalk on Queens Road?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any idea of the estimate of how much that would cost?
No.
Do you wanna, do you wanna try to throw a number out there?
Um.
We have our, we have our head of public works sitting here. It'd be interesting to see if you had, if you knew how much that would cost.
Nine thousand dollars?
Okay. Mr. Epple, did you want to respond?
Yes, thank you, number one, for coming in and talking. And would you mind coming back when it's time for me to present on budget and supporting engineering and public works?
I wouldn't mind at all.
A little bit more than that. Just for information, the name of the subdivision that you were talking about is Bayview Estates. It is under construction. We will be putting forward in the budget in the next couple of years to extend the sidewalk to where that road goes into Bayview Estates. Bayview Estates will have sidewalks within it as well, so we'll get partway with what we're planning now, but that does not get all the way down to the, the road that you just mentioned.
Yeah.
Questions or comments from council? Thank you very much. Excellent presentation.
Can you just mention that there's a lot of kids that live down that road that would like to walk to the street?
Okay, so I forgot to mention one little thing. There are kids on that road that are walking to Salem.
Ten-minute walk.
Ten-minute walk.
And would like to be able to.
Yes.
Safely.
Yes.
More safely.
Yes.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 4F, Tantramar Community Radio, John Warner?
I know, more youth. There's three of us representing CFTA FM one oh seven dot nine, two colleagues, Lisa Emery and Jeff DeGans. I'm John Warner. Tantramar Community Radio is a not-for-profit organization. We reside in the Tantramar region. We are influenced by home, where we live. That's the total essence of CFTA. We enable people from Cumberland, Westland, to share news, music, events, important, what's important today. Highlighting regional, I'm supposed to say next. Hey, that's the right slide, we're doing well. Somebody's paying attention to me. Highlighting regional stories, supporting local initiatives. We have volunteer-driven programming, volunteers, we have twenty, twenty-five volunteers, four to five staff members that run the radio station. They create a valuable cultural resource for Westland and Cumberland areas. We are homegrown. Next slide, please. We are now experiencing two basic issues. Maintain a quality product. After being around for ten years, our product is diminishing in meeting our requirements. And acquiring, it's a big word, continuous sufficient funds. It's a challenge with what's going on in the economy today to retain and, and build on those funds. Next slide. Our mandate. We serve our community. We're not too complicated, are we? No longer is a print media readily available in Westland or Cumberland County. Social media is somewhat unreliable. I'm not sure it's reliable at all. Residents rely and frequently only use radio as a source of information, what's going on in the community, weather reports, news reports, whatever. So we are it. We are, we serve as an information source for our, our community. Next slide, please. Operational challenges and funding needs. It is a continuous challenge to not only keep our product maintained, but also paying staff a reasonable salary plus covering escalating expenses. I'm sure you've heard that word before, escalating expenses. It is unbelievable what's transpiring in our marketplace today, whether it be inflation resulting from things in the past, from pandemic to a gentleman south of the border in a big white house. I won't mention his name. Next slide. Community support efforts. The next slide represents some of our community support efforts. We are not asking for a gift. We wish to offer community service, partnership, without a hit on our own pockets. Everything that's on the next slide is being provided gratis from our radio station. Next slide, please. We do all of this at no charge. Minimal computer-based programming. We have actually, actually people in the studio running our program. As I mentioned, upwards of twenty-five volunteers, five staff. We have a full ten-minute news broadcast. It's the only one in this area that has national and local news being provided, weather reports every twenty minutes. We report on everything that's on that list, from school closures, road closures, conditions, island bridge, power outages, remote broadcast events, lost, found. We found a cat last week, I just wanted to mention. Whether it be what's going on in the health area of COVID, community events. We do all this without fees. We solely depend on our advertising sales and creative events, like music. We just had one last weekend, you may have heard of Valdi showing up in Amherst. We took the First Baptist Church and occupied four hundred and fifty seats at twenty-five dollars a seat. After paying a national artist and all the expenses, we benefited about five to six thousand dollars. But it's a considerable, huh, me, five minutes, hard to believe. One last statement. We will absolutely continue to undertake the tasks mentioned in the previous slide. We're not hard negotiating. We're asking for five to seven thousand dollars per year. We need help. We, like others, have been hit by escalating everything. And the last slide just indicates who we are. Next. Those are three people here, and the last slide.
Excellent. Thank you very much. So, sorry, again, the ask, five to seven thousand dollars per year?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Great presentation. I, I appreciated the joke in the beginning, youth and spirit. I get that. Questions or comments from council? Councilor Wiggins-Collum?
Thank you, Mayor Black. I was at the concert on Sunday with Valdi, absolutely wonderful concert. I've been a great supporter of your radio station since I think it began, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
For the work you do and the volunteers.
We have a number of, we have a number of maintenance items that are in the value of twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars that we need to build into our, our operation. Otherwise, we will have a challenge. Everything from new towers to generators and so on, it's, it's part of running the business. But we do provide services, as indicated, and we have approached the municipality of Cumberland, mayor of, or the town of Amherst, and the province of Nova Scotia. So this is not, so, we're not asking for something that is overwhelming, I hope, and you do consider us. Thank you for the opportunity.
Uh, Council Finney?
John, I know you, I've known you for a long time, I've known Jeff and Lisa as well. I used to be on the board of the radio station a number of years ago. It's my favorite station, because you've got a mix of everything, and I just love it, as a matter of fact. I know the struggles that you're having, because everybody's having them today, but if we can find a way, and I'm hoping we can, to turn around and help you with that, I'd be more than happy to say yay.
We'd love to have a revenue exceed expenses.
Yes, I know.
Versus the other way.
I know what you mean, yeah. Thank you.
I'm curious, and if it's not appropriate, it's fine, don't answer the question. Were you successful with your approaches to the province of Nova Scotia, Cumberland, and the town of Amherst? And like I said, if it's not appropriate to answer the question, that's okay.
It's appropriate.
Yes, thank you for your question. I'm Lisa, by the way. They have responded, but I suspect that they have to have meetings like this before they can approve anything. But they have said that they've looked at everything, they'll get back to us soon.
So they're going through their own budgeting process?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Like here, Andrew, the, we've had a very positive response in regards to what we do within our, our communities, and whether it be the province, or the municipality, or the town of Amherst, it's very, very enlightening response to what we're asking for. We've never tried this before. We've never attempted to seek funds. Our funds, as I'm repeating, are solely from our sales, advertising, and with the tariff situation, one of the first things that is dropped from a business that's having challenges selling the product is sales, advertising.
Yep. And, and I'm sure cost of living and all those other things that people are dealing with is, just exacerbates that, but, but thank you, John, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. 4G, Fresh Winds Eco Village Housing Co-op, Eric Tuzking?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am Eric Tuzking, co-chair of the Fresh Winds Eco Village Housing Cooperative Board, along with Sabine Dietz, and we've addressed before. Today I bring three other members of our board, Tom Snowden, Judy Snowden, and Harris McSheffrey, and they're going to take most of the, the presentation, and I'll answer questions later.
Thank you, you are the Mayor Black, and Tantramar Town Councilors, we really appreciate this opportunity to present to you our ideas for the municipal budget for your new year 2026. As a board member of the Fresh Winds Housing Cooperative, I want to say how much we appreciate your ongoing interest in and openness to and support for our housing project, which has just applied for funding to build more than sixty-eight cooperative housing units on the Fresh Winds property on Fairfield Road, a significant number of which will be slated for affordable housing subsidy and also accessibility for those with, excuse me, with physical limitations. In August of this year, freshmen submitted our proposal to the Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation for a twenty-two million dollar project. If our application is successful, construction of this project will start in 2026 and finish in 2027. It's evident that there is currently a good number of new apartments being built in Tantramar. Research clearly shows that these units are needed, but they are not in the category of affordable rent units and that level required by many local citizens. We are aware that Fresh Winds is just one of a few affordable housing projects being developed for construction in 2026 and 27. As council and staff know, our project will need adequate access to municipal water and sewer infrastructure, as well, as will the other affordable housing projects being developed. Our project and the other projects are being financed by members of the community, community organizations, and the governments of New Brunswick and Canada. Fresh Winds is a not-for-profit cooperative. No one is making a profit from this project. There is, as you know, funding available to this municipality from the federal government's Canada Housing Infrastructure Fund, also known as CHIF. This fund is designated specifically, and I'll quote from their website, "to accelerate the construction and upgrading of essential infrastructure, such as drinking water, wastewater, stormwater, and solid waste infrastructure that will enable the building of more homes across Canada," unquote. We have two requests related to housing for the municipal budget in 2026. Our first request is as follows. Please include in the budget for your, our municipality, funds that could be used to match provincial and federal funds, such as the Canada Housing Infrastructure Fund, to offset at least some of the cost for the necessary infrastructure upgrades. We are asking this for all affordable housing projects, and not just for our Fresh Winds project.
We have greatly appreciated the input from council and staff, including the town engineer, Mr. John Epple. In assessing the details of the infrastructure that is needed, we are asking that they be given more funds to do their work related to infrastructure improvements. The second request for increased budget is for the development of a housing strategy for the municipality. We have learned through many meetings and discussions, some of which were initiated by the mayor's roundtable on housing, that many people are still operating with outdated assumptions on the need for housing in our community. There are huge efforts in the federal government to address this housing shortage, but as we have shown, they have a direct impact on municipalities' budgets. Ten years ago, the local planning commission would have five to ten home construction building permits per year. Now the local construction companies cannot keep up with the need for new builds. There is a move toward modular homes, which, as the council has seen, have their own challenges.
In summary, Tantramar cannot continue simply just reacting to these changes. It needs to be proactive, out front, and prepared for them. So our requests are to put funds towards the development of a strategic housing plan, as well as upgrading the infrastructure. Thank you. If you have any questions, Eric Tuzking will answer them. I'm trying to present as team. Thank you.
Well done, well done, Harris. Excellent presentation again, thank you so much. I did have a couple of questions. So you, you have applied already to CMHC for the twenty-two million dollar project, which would be start, sorry, start 2026 and 2027 is the, the project off the ground, is that correct?
That is correct, for the most part, Andrew. The, the application went into the CMHC under the Cooperative Housing Development Program, and the window for that closed the end of August. And the hope is, is that we start as soon as possible. We anticipate not hearing the response to that application until, for another month or two. That may give us some time in the fall, if we know, to do some infrastructure development, the roads and things like that, but if not, we'd hope to start in the spring.
And so, just really quick, I know, I know you kind of reiterated it, and Harris wrapped it up again in the end, but, so the two asks, matching funds within the budget for housing application, housing applications for non, for nonprofit and affordable housing?
Yes, particularly for infrastructure.
For infrastructure, right, because of the CHIF. And then develop, development of a housing strategy for Tantramar, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Questions, comments from council? Uh, Council Finney?
Eric, I think it's a great idea, I mean, everybody, it's a great idea. I've got this question that I always ask when I hear affordable housing. What is considered affordable housing?
We are using the federal government's definition of that, and that means that those people who are in affordable housing units spend no more than one-third of their annual income for that, for that. than one-third of their annual income for that unit. That's right, 30%, approximately. That means that if they are being subsidized, the government tops that portion up. That's all. Okay? So that's our definition. That is not the same definition if you use it for a for-profit housing development.
Absolutely.
Okay? And that's part of what we're saying, that there's not a lot of information known about the need for affordable housing, because people don't know the answer to the question you're asking.
And it's always been an issue when you're talking about housing of what it means to be affordable.
Yeah.
And people like, different groups and government organizations have a different idea about what affordable means, like, you know, 25, 30% below market value. Well, that's not affordable to many, 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 many people.
That is correct.
Counselor Finney, sorry.
I was going to say, that's what they always used to say many, many years ago. No more than 30% of your salary income to turn around and pay for your apartment.
That's right.
Or housing. But now we see that it's anywhere between 50 and 60 in a lot of cases.
Yeah.
And certainly isn't affordable, that's for sure. And it's getting worse.
Absolutely.
And it's getting better.
That's right. So the definition that I've used is what we're using with the New Brunswick government also, and they've already indicated that they are willing to subsidize those units if they are constructed. Not only for the construction, but also for the ongoing payments, you know, for the rest of the length of our existence.
Okay, thank you, Eric. I appreciate that. If I have any further questions, I'll reach out to you.
Thank you.
CAO had pointed out to me, just in a side conversation, that the development of a housing strategy for Tantramar is included in our three-year strategic plan. We do have a corporate plan that we're working through right now that kind of lays out the roadmap for how that strat plan rolls out. But it is included in the plans that we would be developing over the course of the strategic plan over the next three years. So it's on the horizon.
I hope the horizon comes soon.
Did you want to speak to that, Ms. Born, or I don't want to put you on the spot? Maybe that's all.
Thank you for the question. Certainly, so it is, as we know, in the strat plan for 2025, and the mayor has kindly put me on the spot, but I would have to put Director Taylor on the spot, because it's actually assigned to Community and Corporate Services. So I'm sure he's eager to get a status update. We just keep kicking the ball.
Mr. Taylor?
We have actually applied to the RDC for funding for not just a housing needs assessment, but also a infrastructure survey to figure out the capacity in different areas for our water and sewer infrastructure, and then a overarching housing strategy that would take those into consideration and guide our development going forward. So we have applied to the RDC for that funding, and we're waiting to hear back.
Good. Always good to apply to the RDC and get funding so that we don't have to take that out of our operating budgets. But anyway. Any last questions, comments? Thank you again. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. 4H, IODE Shepity Chapter, Susan Spence.
Good evening, Mayor Black, members of council, Tantramar staff, and members of the public. My name is Susan Spence, and I am here on behalf of IODE Shepity Chapter. IODE Canada is a national women's charitable organization dedicated to enhancing the quality of life for individuals through education support, community, and citizenship programs. This year, we are celebrating 125 years of service to the people of Canada. Tonight, I would like to talk about the importance of the Community Games Afternoon to the people of Tantramar. For the past three years, we have offered weekly games on Wednesdays, an afternoon where young and old can meet, play board games, talk, laugh, and have healthy snacks together. On the last Wednesday of the month, we have a bingo that has been very popular. People who attend are from British Settlement, Dorchester, Sackville. Everyone is welcome. We have held information sessions once a month, where people can learn about different topics, such as nursing homes without walls, the reintroduction of the Atlantic salmon by Fort Folly First Nation, endangered animals in our area, how to avoid frauds and scams, Alzheimer's disease, and a lunch and learn jointly with Nursing Homes Without Walls Tantramar. People of all ages attend, seniors and homeschool children with their mother. We have received good comments, such as one person who had recently lost their spouse, and they enjoy the afternoons playing board games and talking with other adults. The mother of the children says that the children enjoy being with the older people and spending time with us. The afternoon is often a reward for finishing their schoolwork. We have requested an increase in the grant we applied for this year, so we can have more frequent lunch and learn sessions, where people are able to have a healthy meal with others and learn something on a topic at the same time. We also offer small prizes at our monthly bingos, and as you know, the cost of these items has gone up. To help with this, the members of Shepity Chapter donate gently-used items and bring healthy snacks to the games afternoons to help us keep the costs down. In summary, we appreciate the grant funds that we have received, as we would not be able to offer this program without the grant. We plan to continue this program, and your support with a grant increase will help us to do this. The people of Tantramar appreciate this time getting together, and we enjoy providing the afternoon for everyone. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them for you, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much for the presentation. 125 years of IODE as a whole, right, the organization, and then the Shepity Chapter? How many years has the Shepity Chapter been around?
Sixty, no, no, 86.
Wow, amazing.
It's been in Dorchester 86 years.
Amazing.
We are the only IODE chapter left in this area. There used to be many in Moncton, and there used to be two in Sackville. And Dorchester is the only one left in this eastern zone.
So the ask is, you'll be putting a community grant application in?
Yes.
And you're looking, you'll be increasing that when you put that application in, hoping for that increase through the community grant funding?
Yes, because, well, I mean, like I said, we have been subsidizing it ourselves, which is, which is fine, but we could offer more.
Okay.
Especially the meals for people to get together. And Tantramar Nursing Homes Without Walls has been very, very, very helpful. Rochelle is, so we'd like to work with her more often.
Yeah, she's amazing.
Yes.
And so is the Shepity Chapter IODE. You guys are doing fantastic work, but thank you so much for the presentation. Questions or comments from council? Counselor Wiggins calling?
Thank you, Mayor Black. I just have to give a shout out for the tremendous work you ladies do on your chapter. And the lunch and learns, I've attended many of them, and they're just extraordinary. So we hope you'll be able to keep up the good work and have the people join you for your programs. Thanks again, Susan.
We'll do our best. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. 4I, Everybody Altogether Artists Co-op, Elena Maruni.
Hi there. Excuse me. My name is Elena Maruni. Hello to the folks of you that I've met before. It's nice to meet some of you who I have met already. So I'm here to speak on behalf of Everybody Altogether, a nonprofit artist cooperative that is sharing the costs of a storefront and an event space on Lorne Street. Our mission is to support the sale and dissemination of each other's work. You can go to the next slide. We're a group of 14 artists who see the need for a space with regular opening hours, where we can sell our work and retain the full value of its sale. I recently took the opportunity to rent 25 Lorne Street. My colleagues and I have put in over 75 volunteer hours since signing the lease at the beginning of September. Everybody Altogether will open its doors on October 18th to coincide with this year's Art Across the Marsh studio tour. Our priority for the fall is to open our doors ahead of the holiday shopping season. We are requesting a sponsorship grant for 2026 for the second phase of our development. Tantramar is a hub for arts and culture, and is known throughout the Maritimes as a thriving arts community with our Artist Brand Media Center at Struts and the fantastic programming that the Owens Art Gallery provides. However, there is a shortage of spaces where artists can sell their work. Commission-based structures at private businesses typically take 30 to 40% of the sale price, and we want to put that money back in the hands of artists. Space is limited for sales in town. Multiple artists cannot display their work in existing venues, whether for accessibility of the space or an economic barrier for losing such a large portion of their sales. Hosting workshops that are too lengthy or detailed or out of the scope of the media art center becomes a secondary revenue stream once the holiday season ends. There's a growing number of students and emerging artists. Oh, and you can go to the next slide, sorry. So in the slides, in these following slides, are work of the, we now have 14 members. It says 11, but we've grown. People are excited about this. So the next few slides just show examples of what people will be providing. So yes, there's a growing number of students and emerging artists who successfully sell their work at annual events, but these are one-day-only, one-off events, and they're not always known about by the larger Sackville population. The economic impact of our collective not only benefits these artists and our families, but also gives the community more access to arts programming, attracting artists from elsewhere to take and host workshops, and creatives from nearby areas to participate and sell their work through beneficial consignment. We're requesting a sponsorship grant for the second phase of our development that will begin in early 2026. The fourth quarter of 2025 sees us setting up our collective. The 75 volunteer hours I mentioned earlier included painting the space and building physical infrastructure using donated materials and shelving. We meet regularly to ensure that our mandate clearly represents us and our values. As the lead-up to the holidays are significant to small businesses, our focus has been meeting our opening date with full shelves of our work, and as such, some of our displays will be temporary until we have more time to replace them. The post-holiday lull is an ideal time to refine our space. A modest, yet meaningful sponsorship grant of $5,000 will enable us to make purpose-built displays, invest in advertising for the 2026 tour season, and assist with off-season overhead costs. We have a great location with affordable rent. We are walking distance to the downtown core. There's increased foot traffic on the end of the street with the newly opened Second Chance's Secondhand Store. I've been an artist for nearly 40 years, and I intimately know the positive outcomes when children and adults are able to express themselves creatively. Self-expression and learning new skills improves emotional literacy, mental well-being, and self-confidence, and the act of creativity is transforming. But so is bringing art into people's lives. People genuinely want to support local businesses, and that includes buying handmade from local artists. We've had an outpouring of support since getting the keys to this space, and I know that community engagement with strong financial support from our municipality will ensure a mutually beneficial outcome, as the rising tide floats all boats. And thank you.
Thank you very much. I just, I missed the address on Lorne Street again?
Oh, we're 25.
25, okay. And just to clarify again, October 18th is when you're having like a grand opening?
Yes, we'd love to have you. Art Across the Marsh runs annually, it's the 18th and the 19th of October. Artists typically open up their studios so that people can come in and see how things are made. This may perhaps be the last year of Art Across the Marsh, as expenses are going up for everyone. But it may also not, and there may be people who are stepping up. But a number of artists in the community chose to get together in this space so that we could share the fee.
And, sorry, you are a registered nonprofit?
Yes, we will be a registered nonprofit, yeah.
So the $5,000, have you considered applying through the community grant application?
I have not. This is very new to me, and so because we've just started taking, we've just taken the space, I will be pursuing other funding opportunities, and hopefully this won't be the last time you see me up here asking for funds.
Mr. Pride, I can't remember the date that the community grant applications opened. Would you be able to give that date? It would be helpful, since we've mentioned it several times, but...
Sure, yep. The grant program, the applications are open now. Sackville, or sorry, tantramarnb.com, and they close on October 15th.
Okay, so that includes the sponsorship grant, but it would also be the operational grant? Is that what you're saying?
Sorry, I'll let Mr. Pride answer.
Yeah, it sounds to me like you're looking more interested in the small capital grant.
Oh, okay.
But there's an operational grant there as well. Groups are eligible to apply for one, more than one category.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you for telling me.
Yeah, it's amazing. October 18th, I'm not, what day of the week is that? Do you know?
Saturday.
Saturday, okay. I'll try to make it, to pop by and grant it. What are your hours of operation?
The studio tour typically goes from nine to five, I believe. But there's a fantastic website that will tell you, and there are brochures that will be in lots of businesses.
Questions or comments from council? Don't know who was first. Counsel Butcher?
Thank you. This is really exciting, just in time for Christmas shopping and a one-stop spot to find lots of local artists. Like, I think this sounds really fabulous, and I'm going to do my best to be there on the 18th of October. Without getting too much into the weeds, it said 11 artists. You said you've gone up to 15. So how does that work? And how many, if you have, how many would you take? How many different artists could be in your space?
Right. So I, in initiating this project, I've wanted this to be a very democratic and very transparent process. And so in doing so, I've been welcoming lots of feedback from everyone who's interested. Some people do like having a percentage that goes into the business that's based on their sales, 10%. Other people would prefer to have a members fee. Other people have more time and would prefer to have their contribution as time in the space selling work. I think that all of those things can work. We have a few weeks to figure that out, and hopefully we will find one working answer for everyone through that democratic process.
Cool.
Yeah.
Counselor Goggin?
Thank you, Mayor Black. I was speaking with Bree, and she was quite passionate about this project, and I went to, I can't remember his name, but you guys had a live show.
Jim Bryson.
Yes, and I look forward to Kelly McMichael on Thursday. But when she was talking about the space, it looks like it's going to be an awesome spot and perfect space for everybody to kind of share their passion and definitely get more local people to have, like, somewheres that they can go and buy something local, because I think the buy-local movement is definitely much better than importing something from overseas, and when you give a gift that's been locally made to somebody, it means a lot more than going to a big box store and just buying something off the shelf. So definitely support you guys.
Yeah, and if we're able to have workshops where people learn how to carve spoons, and you can give a carved spoon to the loved one, I think it, again, is more meaningful in that aspect. Yeah.
Might as well say, we'll throw more work on Mr. McLaughlin, but a nonprofit, any like workshop-type things, anything where you're kind of reaching out to the public and doing those engagement activities? If there's anything we can do to help with communications or a newsletter, something that we can help put that in, please reach out.
Fantastic.
Counselor Finney?
As I was going to say, it's good to see you again.
Nice to see you.
I'll be there on the 18th for sure.
Excellent.
And the other thing is, is that, I'm just thinking, are you reaching out to the students at Mount A as well?
Yes. So I've reached out to the head of Fine Arts, who is very enthusiastic about it. They've also suggested that we reach out to the experiential learning department, that there could be some overlap there as well. There have been such a great number of fine arts students that stick around in town after they graduate. But I've heard that even the second years are producing just volumes and volumes of work that they really want to share with people.
That's good to hear, as a matter of fact, because like I said, I'm going to say bluntly, but some of those young people up there come from big money, so they can afford to buy their mother and father, or sister and brother, grandmother, grandfather gifts, as a matter of fact. So it's good to hear that you have reached out to them. I thought I knew the answer, but I'll see you on the 18th for sure.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you again. Thank you so much.
Lovely. Take care.
4J, Tantramar Heritage Trust, Karen Velane.
So Becky, I'll let you know when I want photos, okay? Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Black, councillors, and staff. My name is Karen Velane, and I'm the executive director for the Tantramar Heritage Trust. And it's my pleasure to be here this evening to give you a little update on our activities. To remind everyone, we own and operate two museums in Sackville. We own the Bolton House Heritage Center on Queen's Road and the Campbell Carriage Factory Museum in Middle Sackville. We also own one of the few remaining Tantramar Marsh barns, which is located on, we restored it, and it's located on the High Marsh Road. And we also own about five acres of property where the Bolton House Shipyard was. And I'm going to talk more about that in a minute. So there's a lot of things I could talk about this evening. We've been very, very busy. I work for an incredible board of directors. So just to name a few things, we assisted with the research and writing on the panels in the newly opened Quarry Park. On Sunday, two days ago, we launched our forty-first publication on local history, so forty-one books on local history. And this latest one is "The Earliest Houses in New Brunswick's Earliest Town", by Paul Bogard and Ben Phillips. We're nearing the completion, within the next month or so, of a major exhibit renewal at the Bolton House Heritage Center. We have completed over the years dozens of oral history interviews. We're really trying to document, because you just never know. You're really trying to document with particularly foundry workers and railway workers we focused on in the past. But this summer, we were given some incredible artifacts, and we're launching projects to document the Bob Edgett Boxing Club and the Sackville Citizens Band. We currently have over eleven thousand artifacts, seven thousand records in our research center, which is an amazing library of local documents and history. And we have many meters of material in our archives. So invite you to come and explore if you're interested. We receive about three thousand visitors annually to our museums. Our books are shipped all over the world. And we respond to countless email inquiries of a research and genealogical nature. So our reach can't be overestimated, I feel. But given that I've only got five minutes, I'm going to just highlight a couple of things that we did this summer. So one of them, we take very seriously our responsibility as caretakers of our heritage buildings. And so one of the things we did through some very generous funders is we did some major projects at the Carriage Factory Museum. So there's both six photos here. So Becky, if you just want to kind of scroll through them. So the first thing we did is we installed a steel roof because the shingles that we had installed in the early 2000s that we had been told would last thirty years did not last thirty years. So it had a steel roof when we got the building, and we have gone back to a steel roof. The next thing we did is we replaced the clapboards on what is originally the front of the museum. So it's the side of the museum that faces the courtyard, if you've been there. So you can keep going, Becky, and we'll see those. That's, yeah, that's the parking lot side of the Carriage Factory. And there we go, that's the new clapboards being installed because those were rotting out. The next project we're doing, which, well, should have started yesterday, but I haven't been out there, is we are painting, we're repairing and painting all the windows on all the buildings on the site. And that is a huge project that is going to take until the end of October. Next one, that's just another angle. And then next, okay, this is the one that I, I get so excited about everything we do. But with the sort of support of Mount Allison University and with the oversight and organization of Dr. Leslie Shunka, who teaches community-engaged learning at Mount A and is an archaeologist, we were able to do a two-week excavation of the Bolton House Shipyard site this summer. It went on for about two weeks in July. It was pretty intense, the heat, the humidity, the black flies. Yeah, you can just scroll through at your pace. So there they are going down to the shipyard site. That's the archaeology team. But they were amazing. They stayed cheerful the entire time, even though they came back covered in dirt and bug bites. And the dig produced some pretty interesting results. So they did a dig, their site was two meters by three meters. Some of the things they found of the five hundred artifacts that were recovered, they only went down between thirty and forty-five centimeters. So there's, yeah, that's the, that's the whole dig site. And there are a couple of test pits as well. So they found some forged iron nails and a few spikes, which date to the nineteenth century. Lots of clinkers, which is coal being burned. They found some melted glass, which is not from windows. So we're trying to figure what that's from. We found sandstone that wasn't from the site, but was moved in. We found some pieces of wood, which are handles off of tools. And we found some very interesting pieces of ceramic that we're trying to figure out what that's from. So the archaeologists think that they found the remains of the mill. I'll finish up. But they didn't get down as far as they wanted. There's the possibility of another building underneath that they think might be Akkadian. So we have big plans for next summer. So my ask is for you to please maintain the support, the operating support that you have for many, many years. And then we are also planning an archaeology camp for children for next summer that we are going to make an application to the town under the Special Projects Program. Thank you very much.
Amazing. Excellent presentation again. So the Shipyard, I'm just curious, what are the future plans for that site? I mean, you have, the Tantramar Heritage Trust has done great work with Bolton House and the Carriage Factory. The two museums are amazing. They're amazing sites to just even be outside of, let alone inside. So is there any work, once the excavation and the archaeological investigation has been done on that site? Any, any plans for, you know, I guess it'd be touchy, but maybe public access?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know how much I'm allowed to say. This could go on for five to ten years, we're talking about. So the plan for next summer is to do a field school with possibly thirty students, maybe fifteen from Mount A and fifteen from UNB St. Thomas. And so that would expand the dig considerably. If they each do a one-by-one meter square, and it would go for four to six weeks. Plus, we would have the children's camp, who would also be doing excavating on the site. Once something is declared, like a provincial archaeological site, there are a lot of restrictions on what can happen there. So right now, the farmer that has the land next to ours grazes his cattle on there and has an electric fence. So it kind of helps us by protecting the dig site. But I mean, in some ways, the sky's the limit. We had, one of the archaeologists is talking about maybe building a ship, like a wooden ship, like. So, yeah, I get a little overwhelmed sometimes. But it, but I mean, yeah, the people involved with this project are really thinking big. Some of the artifacts, because they would go to Frederickson, to the provincial archives, like they technically own everything we bring up. But there is talk about putting together an exhibit at Bolton House of some of these artifacts. They'd be on a long-term loan. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does, yeah, for sure. Well, you've said what you could say, I assume. Maybe there's stuff that you can't say.
Yeah.
And feeling, and feeling overwhelmed is par for the course for an executive director of a nonprofit organization, just so you know.
Good, yeah, yeah.
Questions or comments from council? Council Finney? Oh, wow, okay. All three pushed the button at the same time.
Karen, your presentation reminds me of when you were a student and you were doing plays and things years ago. The drama is still there. You're still very good at it.
Oh, well, thank you.
I, I love the Bolton House. I haven't been in for a while. I've been meaning to get in. As I told you, I really liked the first room on the left-hand side with the Turkish Christian motif. And I love that room, as a matter of fact, and the wallpaper.
It's beautiful, yeah.
Anyway, thank you for coming. And yeah, I hope we can turn around and continue the support for you.
Thank you.
Council Martin?
Thank you for your presentation. It's very interesting. I'm really excited to hear that you're doing a project on the Bob Edgett's Boxing Club. As a boy, I guess I was about twelve when I joined Bob Edgett's Boxing Club. And I stayed with it for about ten years. And I know there's a picture of me somewhere floating around laying on the campus, on the floor, after a boxer from St. John Nebrunzig knocked me out. So if you come across it, just rip it up, please.
We might want to exhibit that one.
So being, being very modest, but also I think this might be your next participant for the oral history collection.
Yes, yes.
Anyway, just throwing that out there, Council Martin.
Yeah.
Council Tower?
Thank you, and thank you for your presentation. I think this is fantastic where we're heading. As I had said in council earlier, when I was at the FCM, I was approached as a counselor from Manitoba. He was an elderly gentleman, but he had great knowledge of this area. And he questioned me at the time that as a counselor, why aren't you pushing to have your shipbuilding history worked on, published? And I said, well, we have somebody who's working in those areas, and it takes time. So I certainly hope we do go forward supporting you for many more years. And some of the ideas you're talking about may require extra little funds along the way, which I definitely would support the idea of it, so.
Yeah.
I do think that, I would like you to say anyway, because I had some people ask me, if you become a member, what benefits do they get from that membership to the Heritage Trust?
Membership gives you free admission to our, both of our museums, free use of the research center and archives, a vote at our annual general meeting, and you get sent to you either by email or regular mail, our newsletter, which we publish a hundred and fourteen issues of. So it's published four to five times a year with articles on local history and our activities.
And would you say the price of that?
So it's twenty dollars a person and thirty dollars for a family or an organization.
Excellent. Thank you for that.
Very reasonable.
It is.
Yep.
It's on our website, so.
I just wanted to make one final comment. And since you mentioned it, it was really wonderful to see Paul Bogard at the opening of the Quarry Park. I haven't seen Paul in a long time. And when I went to university, he helped me out with the project about the grindstones down in Rockport area. And anyway, he's just a wonderful man, and it was, it was great to hear him speak at the Quarry Park opening about the Heritage Trust work on the panels at the park. So just wanted to say that, wonderful to see him.
Yes, yeah, he really enjoyed it.
Uh, Council Tower, sorry, I didn't.
No, that's okay. What you were talking about reminded me. I also was at the dinner, and Paul Bogard put on a fantastic presentation. And he really appreciated the knowledge that that man has.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, thank you again so much.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to 4K, Tantramar Seniors College, Kate Braden. I hope I said your last name right, Kate.
It's actually Breeden.
Okay.
But I know, it's a bit weird. Okay. Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. I'm speaking to you today on behalf of the Tantramar Seniors College to request funding for rental space from the municipality of Tantramar. The Tantramar Seniors College, oh geez, can't see it. We're a non-for-profit organization. We have charitable status. And our main goal is to promote lifelong leaning, learning, by having seniors teach to and learn from other seniors. So courses are taught by volunteer seniors who have skill, knowledge, and passion for a subject. And they're volunteers, and they teach. Could I have the next slide, please? So we have four centers for our Tantramar Seniors College, four centers of learning. Amherst, Sackville, which is now Tantramar, Kodiak, which is Riverview, Moncton, Dieppe, and Shettyac. So courses are organized regionally and taught regionally. But if you're TSC member, you can come to any course. And for sure, many people from Kodiak and Amherst come to Sackville courses. And it's great to meet them and have them. Okay, next slide, please. So Tantramar Seniors College is all run by volunteers. And we have a number of volunteers in our community here who are very active in the Tantramar Seniors College. Every term, so there's three terms a year, there's twenty to thirty volunteer instructors who teach courses, depending on how many courses we have and how many are taught by different people, if there's one or two teaching. Local volunteers from Tantramar are very active on the board of directors. Usually, there's anywhere from three to six of us on that board a year. And we have a Sackville curriculum team now of six members, and we're responsible for organizing all the courses that take place. So finding volunteers to teach them, helping them figure out what they want to teach, finding a place for it, and scheduling it into the whole term. And my co-chair, Maggie Beaton, is at the back here. So the two of us co-chair that. So the next slide, please. This just shows some of our registration numbers. So they fluctuate between fifty and sixty a term, depending. Sometimes you'll get a term, spring is usually lower. People are heading off to travel. Fall is usually a big one. And they take about five courses a year. The total enrollment across all four regions, now it says two fifty, but it should say five fifty. So Sackville is a small, but unique and important part of this endeavor that involves seniors. So next slide. This shows the courses that are offered this fall. And there's a big, long list of them. I think there's twenty-one or two, and it varies. Sometimes we have twenty-five, sometimes we have eighteen. So you can see we have outdoor and physical activity courses like cycling, yoga, Tai Chi. We have health courses, we have cooking. We have a course on home energy improvements. Quite a few craft courses this fall. That's not always the case, but it is this fall. We often have gardening courses taught by Harold Potma in the room here. There's, we're running a series on food banks that Heather Patterson is doing. There's often music courses. Tantramar Vanity Concert Band gave us a course. There's been courses on classical music, playing ukulele, and so on. One of our highlights is courses on our community. There's visits to local businesses, CWS, the Gemini Observatory, and there's been many courses on the history of Sackville. So you can see from this variety of courses, there's a great benefit to the seniors, both here and throughout the region. It keeps both their mind and their body active, and it provides an opportunity to socialize while doing this. So the next slide looks at our rental costs. And we really like renting the Bill Johnstone Activity Center. And so winter and spring 2025, we used it for twenty-three hours. Fall, this fall, we've got quite a few courses, and we're hoping to use it for twenty-eight hours. We also use other rental properties in Sackville, like the United Church, the Anglican Church Hall, Hall, Church by the Lake, Perpetual Motion Dance Studio, and we pay for those spaces. I mean, some spaces are good for certain things, and so that's why we hold courses there. And it's worth noting that the other centers of learning receive donated municipal space or they receive grants for space. So it's kind of how it is all run, so that's why I'm asking for. We're asking this year for $3,500. We do need to up the amount we pay the other organizations we use space from. So my final slide just talks a bit about the Bill Johnstone Activity Center, which we really see as an ideal venue to have seniors' courses in. It's spacious room, big tables, lots of chairs, you can move them around. There's a picture there of us having a wreath making course there, so you can see the tables are laden with various materials. People can move around and yet still work at a table. And often, we have kind of lecture or slideshows, and so you can fit a lot of people into that space comfortably. Has lots of windows, lots of light, and yet you can shut the blinds to have slides. And it's easily accessible, and the washroom is easily accessible. There's lots of parking, and it's centrally located, so we really like to use that space. So that is the space we really love renting from the town. And I know in the past, I think you gave us a donation of using that space, but now I think it's preferred that we pay for it. So that brings me to the end of my presentation, and I wondered if you had any questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. So again, the $3,500 ask is your projected cost for your rentals for the 2026 season.
Yeah.
And again, I think that the Tantramar Seniors College has applied through the community funding application before, I believe?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So.
One year, well, I won't go into that. One year it got forgotten, and so it just got lost in the shuffle. So that's the year we got free use of the space, but, you know, it was great.
Mr. Pride, did you want to speak about the Bill Johnstone Field House? There was, Kate Braden had suggested, sorry, Breeden, had suggested that one year there was like a no charge, but then there is a cost. Can you just talk about what, how much that would cost for a nonprofit group to access that space?
Yeah, thanks for the question. We've actually been, or council's been providing them with a grant for the last couple of years other than that one, missed year, to cover the cost of those rental spaces.
Okay, okay. Any questions or comments from council? Yep, Counsel Finney.
Kate, I didn't catch exactly, when does it start? Is it September 1st?
No, it starts, um.
September 29th.
Thanks, Maggie, September 29th, yep.
Okay, so we've got time to turn around and become a member?
Uh.
Or buy.
For next term.
Yeah.
I mean, the sign up was about the 12th or 13th of September, and I've got some brochures, brochures here, I will hand around at the end. Yeah, so there's three terms, and you, it's, registration is all online, and the registration is usually two weeks before the start of the term, and then you get notified by email whether you get into the courses. So, yeah. So January, they start end of January, and the spring term starts April, April?
First of May, I think.
Beginning of May, oh, yeah, in May. Okay. And the terms run for about three or four months.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, and I'll pass.
Moving on to 4L, Early Childhood Family Resource Center of Westmoreland Albert Incorporated, Catherine McIntyre.
Good evening, Your Worship, Council, Staff, and the members of the gallery. My name is Catherine McIntyre. I'm the Executive Director of the Early Childhood Family Resource Center of Westmoreland Albert, and I'm here with Nicola Keeling, a volunteer with the Sackville Play Group. Since 1995, the Family Resource Centers have welcomed every family who comes to the doors and offered services in both English and French, all for free. Our programs include prenatal and postnatal support, parenting and early childhood programs, health and safety promotion, and connections to community resources. Last year alone, we had over 7,000 visits and welcomed more than 400 new families. That tells us there is real and growing demand in what we do. Here in Tantramar, families have long benefited from the Sackville Play Group, a volunteer-run program that's welcomed 50 families over the last three years. We've grateful, they were grateful for council support last year with a small donation to help support their snack fund, bringing healthy food to parents with young children. And these economy, we've heard, we all know the pressures that that brings. It's made a huge difference for children and parents. Building on a community needs assessment that we did last year in cooperation with and some help from the math department at Mount Allison University, we've expanded our services by introducing some different activities here in the Tantramar region, including musical morning at the library, active kids in Dorchester, and bringing other resources to the playgroup. This fall, we're also partnering with the fire department for a car seat safety clinic, ensuring that travel, that children are traveling safely in vehicles. About 75% of car seats aren't installed correctly, so it's Car Seat Safety Week this week, so I'm just bringing that out there. Investing in families more than compassionate policy, it's smart economics. When parents feel supported and connected, children thrive and communities become healthier and stronger. In 2025, Tantramar is forecasted to have around 900 children under the age of six. Based on participation rates, we expect that a quarter to a third of those families will engage with early childhood programming this year. Families are under increasing pressures, whether from the cost of living, social isolation, or limited access to support. Our programs are often the first step in helping parents feel less alone, more confident, and better equipped to raise healthy children. I'm going to let Nicola speak to some of the local impact.
I used to take my kids to the playgroup when they were toddlers, and it was, it was run by Brenda Allen and Beth Briscoe and a bunch of other, the community members who, who, I think they ran the program, it was probably about 20 years ago it was started, at the old United Church that was torn down, but now it's at the Presbyterian Church on Bridge. So that was amazing to get to go Thursday mornings and to, it was a drop-in, be there with other families who were dealing with the same things you were, and to just have that support. It was amazing, very easy, doable, just to get out the door and get there, and you had it made. You had a good start to your day. So it was a great program for me, and when Brenda Allen was ready to pass on the program, she asked if I would take it over on a volunteer basis, and I did that three years ago, and it's been wonderful to connect with the families, especially the new, new arrival, like new families to the area, were usually their first stop. So it's been wonderful getting to meet everybody. Yeah, and partnering with Catherine, it's been a great boost.
Yeah, so the Family Resource Center wants to make sure we have the sustainability with that program. We don't want to see that go away, and young parents are really, really tough to be doing some of that. So we want to sustain the playgroup with snacks, training, and materials. We want to continue the active kids in Dorchester, including, you know, the insurance and staffing times, and we want to deliver car seat clinics with trained technicians and replacement seats, and looking ahead, explore prenatal and postnatal services for the families here in the region. So thank you so much for your time and your commitment to families in Tantramar, and that concludes.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you for taking on the volunteer work for the playgroup.
My pleasure.
My wife and I went to the playgroup at the Presbyterian Church when we had our second child. He's now 14 years old, but it was great for both of us just to have that access, and as you say, being able to talk to other parents and have a spot where you can kind of just take a breath, especially in a busy morning when you have other kids as well to deal with. So anyway, just a wonderful, wonderful program here in the Tantramar area, so thank you so much for that. So the ask is to continue with the funding that you had applied for last year? So, and again, was, that was through, I assume, the community grant funding application?
Yeah, so there was a small, there's a small grant. We've increased the level of grant this year, so we can increase the number of services that we do provide, but it is coming through that program.
Okay, so you're, you're going to add that increase in your application through that program?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Questions or comments from council? You did a great job. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
So 4M, Other Public Budget Presentations. I believe we have one two-minute presentation. Natalie Donaher?
We have to leave. Just like to make one comment. Art across the marsh has been in existence for over 25 years, and this artist, along with 30 other locations in around the Tantramar, primarily between Sackville, Dorchester, and areas in the Robert Line, has been leading that, local artists, and we are looking for continuance. And with your support and visitations, it will happen.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Natalie?
Good evening, Mayor, councilors, and staff. I'm Natalie Donaher, and I'll be highlighting some of the nearby initiatives in affordable housing. This is from a press release on the City of Mary Mashie's website. It's published on July 23rd of this year. Quote, "The government is providing the City of Mary Mashie with $1.8 million to update infrastructure and enable two housing developments." It continues, quote, "The Chatham Nonprofit Housing, Inc. Board of Directors wants to thank the RDC and the City of Mary Mashie for working with us on these key housing developments." This is a quote from Blair Martin, President of Belter Community Partners and developer with Chatham Nonprofit Housing. Quote, "This new infrastructure comes at a time when our board has made the decision to grow the corporation's existing portfolio of affordable rental housing in Mary Mashie. Creating the additional housing we need in the community is a top priority for city council," and that's a quote from the Mary Mashie Mayor, Adam Lorden. The second article from Natalie Sturgeon, a reporter at The Courier in St. Andrews, which is a town of 3,000. This was published February 6, 2025, this year. Natalie Sturgeon writes, "A new housing development in St. Andrews is providing much-needed relief to individuals and families struggling to find affordable housing." Mayor Brad Henderson stated, quote, "We know that across Charlotte County, many people are struggling to find affordable places to live." The article continues, "The town played a pivotal role in making the project a reality, contributing $500,000 in funding, which is expected to be recouped through property taxes in the coming years." Henderson stressed the council's commitment to innovative solutions despite obstacles such as rising construction costs and limited federal funding. As the housing crisis continues, the article says, "To strain small communities, both Henderson and Bevington hope this project can serve as a model for other municipalities." And lastly, this is a press release from the River Philip Foundation, released May of this year, about affordable housing in Amherst, which has a population of approximately 10,000. "Applications are now open," it says, "for a new housing community called The Groves at Hillside, Hillsdale, pardon me, located on Church Street." They state that there are 47 residential units. Quote, "Many families are also spending more than 30% of their income, so my request is for Tantramar to commit to supporting nonprofit housing to assure that affordable housing is built in our community. This time next year, I hope that we are touting our own press releases in this vein." Thank you very much.
Thank you. And so, sorry, the first article that you had talked about was in Chatham, Mary Mashie?
Yes.
And the second one was Brad Henderson, so St. Andrews?
St. Andrews, and the last one is in Amherst.
In Amherst, okay. Just to reach out and see in some ways how they did that. I'm sure you have that information. We can, I can reach out to you, or we can reach out to you. Thank you very much for that. Questions or comments from council? No, okay. Thank you very much, Natalie.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to, moving on to number five in the agenda, motion from Counselor Michael Tower.
Thank you, Mayor. I move the council send formal letters to Premier Susan Holt with copies to Minister Gilles Lepage and Minister Rene Legasse, MP Dominic LeBlanc, CEO of NB Power Lori Clark, and NB Power's Board of Directors and CEO of Pro Energy Jeff Cannon, urging the immediate cancellation of their proposed Central Village Renewable Integration and Grid Security project. The letter shall further request that NB Power prioritize the use of wind and solar energy generation, supported by the proven battery energy storage system best. Furthermore, council requests that Premier Susan Holt meet with council to discuss the project in person.
Moved by Counselor Tower, seconded by Counselor Finney. Questions or comments from council? Just before we get to that, I would like to make a motion to postpone this motion to the regular council meeting of October 14th. I'm moving that motion. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Esther Brooks. And I'll speak to that motion, and so there's, we now have a new motion on the floor, we'll deal with that one, and then we'll go, depending on how that goes, we'll go back to the original Our bylaw is clear about the process for a notice of motion. The bylaw states in Section 15-1 and 15-2A that members may bring forward notices of motion under the Notice of Motion and Resolutions portion of the agenda of a regular council meeting, and further states that the notice of motion will be placed under the reports from Administration section of the agenda for the next regular council meeting, at which the member who made the notice of motion is present. I'm not going to sit here and pretend that this council has been perfect in following the laws that we make. We have made some bumps along the way and have learned some lessons as we have become a new municipality, but we have never not followed the rules for a notice of motion, and I want council to be aware of this. At the last regular council meeting, we were attempting as best we could on the fly to address Counselor Tower's request for making a motion, and in doing so, we came up with, not fully considering, having a notice of motion at this special meeting this evening. That was the wrong decision to make, as we are now in direct contravention of our own bylaw. The public hold their elected officials to a higher standard when it comes to representing, but also in terms of proper governance, and we are always under scrutiny, as it should be. But we also have an obligation to protect the municipality, including staff, council, and through risk mitigation, the public purse. Falling out of line with the laws we enact and follow not only creates a precedent, but puts the organization as a whole at risk. That is why I'm speaking in favor of this motion, and I hope council will seriously consider what I have said. So the motion is on the floor, we have a seconder, I've spoken to my motion. Open it to comments or questions from council on this motion, not the original motion from Counselor Tower. The motion from myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Esther Brooks, which is to move this, postpone this motion to the October 14th regular council meeting, following our procedure and organization of council bylaw. Counselor Finney? Sorry, wait until your mic is on. Counselor Finney?
I'll be voting against your motion, because I think it's too important, and we need to do it now, not later. So I'll be voting against this.
Counselor Butcher?
So I realize it's very important for us to follow the bylaws, and if, and the bylaws are put in place in order to maintain a level of accountability for the public, for the people that we are supposed to serve. But I have to echo Counselor Finney with the awareness that we are running out of time for keeping this big thing rolling, and I worry that if we are waiting in order to follow our bylaws, which is important, if we are waiting on that, then we may be too late with making any stand that we may be trying to do. So I will be voting against this as well.
Counselor Hicks?
Thank you, Mayor Black. I will be supporting your motion, as I feel the EIA's not even done on this yet. I feel that we're jumping too quick on this, so I will be supporting your motion.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Esther?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Black. I think a pause is appropriate. We've had one party in front of this council. I mean, I don't think it's, I think it's well-understood that this is outside our mandate and jurisdiction. We have had one party or one side of this presented to us, we have not yet had an opportunity to have both sides. Pro Energy has not had an opportunity to present to council, and they would like to do so. And I think it's premature to pass a motion as proposed. There's a recent development from the federal government, the IAC has been approved from the Fed, so that's recent developments in this motion, and we're still not done with the provincial component. So I think we need to, I think we need to hear both sides, and I think we need to do diligence on this one. I'll be voting for your motion, Mayor Black.
Counselor Tower?
Thank you, Mayor. I will be voting against your motion. I understand how you want to follow certain procedures and, and procedure and bylaws with high policies, I think, should have been changed already by now. But anyway, I followed the direction that was given me. I could have made the motion that night, and so by saying what you're saying, in the future, we just don't try to work around things and go forward with motions. This is an important motion to make. It's the situation that's happening. We have the provincial government who doesn't want to give a full-blown EIA on this, which should be really happening. I questioned the Minister of Local Environment and about just one segment of this, dealing with wells and the protection of them. And I said, when I spoke to the Pro Energy at their presentations, they, he said, we'll have a million dollars to cover the wells. So I'll. So I almost got.
Yep, just on this motion.
Yes, right on. Yep, exactly. So with that kind of an attitude, $1 million would not go very far. And the Minister of Environment said, well, maybe if they put it away in a bank account, it'll have more money in it, which should cover it. Once, once those wells are ruined, that's it. So I don't think we can wait. I think we should go forward with this now and, and get it done. Send off and cancel one and get moving forward.
Councilor Wiggins-Collville?
Thank you, Mayor Black. I do agree, we have to follow our bylaws, which is something that when we first started, when we first amalgamated, this didn't happen. It, it made a big, big mistake at the beginning. So if this is our bylaw, which you have stated it is, Mayor Black, that it, it should be followed. Now, I do agree that the EIA, we should have what, what it is. We've got to know what this is doing to our environment, and, and it's got to be, you know, brought forward by the professionals that, that have to, to do with this. Now, I'm wrapping it up.
Just, just on this motion.
Yeah, just on this motion. So I, I do have to agree that we should follow our bylaws.
Okay. Any last questions or comments? Oh, Councilor Gogeh, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Black. I kind of wanted to hear what everybody else was, was saying. And if we follow our procedures, then yes, Councilor Tower could have put forward the motion on the day. He decided not to, based on the advice that he was given at that night. While I agree that it's important for us to follow the rules, he technically could have put the, the motion forward that evening. So this gave staff a bit more time to come up with something to send. While I agree that it is important for us to follow our rules in another way, he could have just put it forward that night, and we could have just sent it off. So I, I, I can't support your motion, unfortunately.
So any last comments, questions? No? Call for the question?
Question.
So make sure this is the motion to postpone, okay? So if you are voting in favor of it, then you are voting to postpone it. If you are voting against it, then you are not voting in favor of postponing, just to get that straight. So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so nays from Councilor Finney, Councilor Martin, Councilor Tower, Councilor Butcher, Councilor Gogeh? Okay? So motion defeated. So now, we're back to the regular motion. You can always wave like this, too. This is like the waving for people who are, like, hearing-sensitive. You can just go like this. So we had a mover, Councilor Tower. We had a seconder, Councilor Finney. Okay, so now we're on this motion that, that Councilor Tower has proposed in front of us. So this is the motion that we are making comments on or debating. Okay? Councilor Tower?
Thank you, Mayor. To start off with, I'd like to say that I've talked to a lot of residents in this town, in this municipality. I've talked to people at farmer's market, on the streets, while shopping, at the post office, a lot of different places. And then you can add all the emails I've received. And I even spoke to the, our Climate Change Advisory Committee to get comments back and support for or against ideas. And out of all those questions, all those conversations, I can honestly tell you, I don't know how many, so I can't give that number. But I only had one person speak in favor of the gas plant. So therefore, with that as a background, it was like, ah. I even spoke to what I would call an expert on the solar and the battery storage systems. And when we were at one of the presentations, the comment was, why aren't you using batteries? And they said, well, well, batteries would only hold you for two days, and then you run out of power. What are you gonna do? It's like magically, the wind doesn't blow anymore, and the next day, the sun doesn't come out. So, you know, we know that the wind's gonna blow, especially during storms, and we also know that when the storm passes, the sun does come out. So the batteries will still be recharging. So I was a little miffed that they were so narrow-minded on that thought pattern. And then I get into the part where they were talking about taking the minerals out and, because the water isn't pure enough. And they're gonna take all those minerals out and dump them back in the ground, or wherever it runs, into our water sources. And we know that those water sources will find their way right across Tancharmar. And that includes Alack, and in time, it will even reach Dorchester. So when I questioned the, one of their experts they had there, and I'm using their comments, I questioned about if there was a high concentration of magnesium there, which we know affects the neurological effect of the brain, that you're gonna take all that out and you're gonna dump back into the water, and so you're gonna raise the concentration. Now, it may still be just below to begin with, but when you start dumping that at 7 million liters a day, that's gonna really be pumping a lot of bad things into the water. And that's not gonna be good for Midjick right off the bat. They're the ones who are gonna suffer. And once they lose their wells, that's done. I mean, their livelihood, if you're, if you've got a farm and you're trying to keep your animals alive, that's not gonna be good for them. So I, I was just, again, blown away by the fact that they couldn't see the issue of that. And when I questioned 7 million liters, and the comment was, well, that's not as much as it sounds. But if you go by Stats Canada, in the Midjick area alone, they, they only use 193 liters at best in any one day. So I think there's a pretty large difference between the two of them. And if they're gonna be doing that, there goes the water source. And when I checked down in the States where there have some of these operations going, they're sucking so much water out of it that the, the aquivers can't refill anymore, and the earth above starts dropping down. So if it did get a chance to fill up, it couldn't. Imagine that happening in Midjick. And I've been told that natural gas is clean, cleaner than coal. But when I mentioned the fact that we don't burn coal here, our air doesn't have that in it. And she said, well, you can't really compare it to that. And I said, well, you talk to everybody in Tancharmar and ask me, ask them whether they think that our air is good quality air. And they had no answer for that. When I spoke about the solar energy, again, I already mentioned the, the battery storage method, and they said, no, it doesn't work. Well, Scotland just recently went on board with a 200 megawatts of energy using the BASS system. Germany added another 1.4 gigawatts using the storage system. And that goes on top, so they're up to something like, I think it was 6.8 gigawatts of energy they use with the BASS system. So it doesn't, doesn't sound right to me, any way, shape, or form. And then you add the fact that if you're gonna have these jet engines pumping away, if something goes wrong up there, we've got a fire. They're gonna store 3 million gallons of diesel up there. So we got a forest fire, we got diesel at risk, and then our fire departments have to try to find a way to respond to that. Now, I know they would try, they would do everything they could. But how much is that gonna help our municipality as they fight hard to protect people? Then you, and I was at, when I was at the quarry opening, is when I really thought about it, we were very proud to open up the Pickard Quarry, and it's a beautiful spot. And then I thought, oh yeah, and now we're planting seeds to attract and feed the monarch butterfly. We have the waterfowl park with the Ramsar recognition, and now we're gonna put, oh yeah, go ahead and put your gas plant up there. You think Ramsar would like that whole operation happening in this area? I don't think they would. I think that they would be able to say, at some point, you've got to correct things. So I think that we really want to get away from using natural gas and diesel and try to encourage our premier to stop it and move forward. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Butcher?
Thank you. I agree with everything Councilor Tower has said. I'd also like to comment that I went to one of the, the Music Barn to hear from the company, where they said that indigenous groups were buying in and, and part of this, and had approval, which we discovered was not true. And Chief Rebecca has spoken out and said that the, that Fort Folly was not consulted at all. And my understanding is that at this point, no indigenous group has bought in. They only have the option to do so. None of them have. So that was misinformation. They called it an addition to green energy, but it is not green energy. It is burning fossil fuels. So it is an addition to our green energy, in the same way that a sugary breakfast can be part of a healthy breakfast. So that was a misinformation. They are an American company. They are using equipment that is made in the States in a political climate where we are trying to be elbows up and become more self-sufficient here. And I understand, there is the argument that this plant could make us more energy-efficient ourselves, but we pride ourselves on being a green space, a space where families can grow and be healthy, a space where animals can thrive. And nothing about this gas plant that burns fossil fuels, possibly fracked fossil fuels, nothing about that after considering and listening to all kinds of people. And I have not heard from one person in support of it. If they are out there, they have not taken the time to speak to me. Nothing about it feels right for our community. And I don't like to think that I am a NIMBY kind of person, not in my backyard. I don't think this should be in anyone's backyard, but I am elected to look after this backyard, and I do not want this here. Thank you.
Councilor Finney?
I just want to say, first of all, I went to the very first night up at the Midjick church. I listened to the people up there as to what they had to say. They were a little disappointed with me at the end, because I didn't have an opinion. But I told them I was gonna wait and listen to the other side. I went Tuesday night to the Music Barn, or was it Monday? Whatever. And, was it Monday?
I can't remember.
And, and then I went to the next night up at the Civic Center. Then I read all kinds of reports. And the, the one thing that really stuck in my craw was the fact that they lied. They told us that they had the natives on, on board with this, the indigenous. They lied completely. NB Power doesn't want to have an EIA. I don't understand exactly why the federal government just recently accepted all the, the answers that Pro Energy has given them, so they're approving it, I guess. I just, I just don't trust them anymore, and I don't see the real value in this. If you lie to me, then you'll never get my trust again. So I'm sorry. I just can't. I think we'd be crazy to do it, and it is an American company. I mean, we've got a problem right now with the, the cross-border stuff that's going on, of course, from that man down there in a white house. I won't mention his name. I heard that earlier. It's, I just don't see it's a real good thing. NB Power's never been really honest with us. The only thing they keep doing is making mistakes like Point La Pro, and they keep raising our rates. So I can't believe them saying, for them to tell us, oh, this is gonna be a good thing. I'm sorry, I just can't support it, and so therefore, I'll be voting against it.
Councilor Gogeh?
Thank you, Mayor Black. Just gonna keep it sweet and simple. I've heard maybe one or two people that are for it, but the vast majority that I've spoken with have been against it. Definitely, it's not the place for it to be put at. Everybody else has kind of given all the information that I would want to say, but like, just some of the things that they were talking about, like with solar not being able to, to generate enough power. I have a solar system. It generates some power, even if it's cloudy. While we're elected to represent 10,000 people, and maybe a few have shown up to oppose this, I feel like the few that have shown up are loud enough voices that we need to take a serious look at this and speak for the ones that haven't come to council or haven't commented or anything like that. So definitely, I, I do agree with sending these letters off.
Deputy Mayor Esther Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor Black. So speaking, or I'm going to speak against this motion. And listening to my colleagues just now, I believe it, it even further reinforces my statement that we need to have an opportunity to have Pro Energy here, because there's some questions that we have. We're making a decision without having all the facts. And I'm very fact-based, and I'm very objective. So I have just some words prepared here, and I'd like to speak. I speak against this motion for many reasons. I believe this to be an unnecessary motion that does not fall within the mandate of this council. No one on this council is an environmental expert qualified to make a decision as requested in this motion. These experts exist within the federal and provincial bodies that were tasked with ensuring this project meets all necessary environmental requirements. This past Friday, the federal EIA, or IAC, released its decision early that no further investigation was required, and that the project had the green light from them. That's concerning, that the experts are saying, it's good. I, I'm searching for more information is what I'm searching for. I am objective. This project is not only outside our jurisdiction, but the intent of it flies, of the motion flies with the face of what we're actually elected to do, which is to provide objective representation for all residents. Not to mention that this motion is being made before both sides have even had an opportunity to come before our council and present. Pro Energy is planning to join us one of our meetings soon, and until that happens, I don't believe motions such as this should be entertained. I have refrained from speaking either for or against this project publicly, as I believe that it is our duty and responsibility as counselors. We must represent all citizens equally and fairly. I have heard from residents who are opposed to the project, as well as from those who are in support of it, and even if that's one, that's somebody in support of it. As counselors, that is our job, to listen, to understand, and then make the best long and short-term decision based on the facts for the betterment of all residents. We are elected officials. We are not activists. We are not environmental experts. We must not be swayed by populist or perceived populist interest. We must not be, we have a responsibility to remain unbiased and objective. I have continuously stated that my personal position on this project is that the environmental concerns must be addressed at both levels, federal and provincial, first and foremost, before it is allowed to proceed. That has not changed. As a council, we all have an interest in ensuring the processes at other levels of government are followed, and that is what I've been focusing on and am committed to continue doing. I would like to talk about the provincial need for this project, just in general, and what its purpose actually is. I believe it has been grossly misrepresented by some, and therefore greatly misunderstood by many. The purpose of this project is described right in the name, RIGS, which is for Renewables Integration and Grid Security. This project is required to enable and support the introduction of more renewable energy sources onto our power system. Alternative energies such as wind and solar require stabilization. They need backup. Natural gas turbines are a proven environmentally conscious companion.
No.
Over coal or nuclear options for supporting renewable sources as they produce the required inertia during operation to help smooth out the ups and downs inherent with an alternative, alternative power sources. This project This project will help MB Power deliver stable power to the province as they work to develop a more sustainable grid, resulting in a predictable energy supply with a consistent and more stable cost to consumers. The battery storage systems, as suggested in this motion, are not yet a realistic or financially slash environmentally responsible option, given current technology. They come with huge gas and huge GHG emissions just to produce the battery. I would urge the public to educate themselves on these topics so that you're aware of facts. As a caution, I would offer that neither social media posts or independent blogs would be considered reputable sources for facts when you're researching. These influences are typically the reason a project such as this gets blown way out of proportion, and the actual details are misrepresented. All aspects of this project, including water usage, emission levels, and wildlife impacts, have been grossly overstated and misrepresented. I urge our residents to look past these misrepresentations and seek out their information from reputable sources, such as accredited media outlets or from the responsible levels of government that are involved. I have also stated publicly that if, and only if, all of the provincial and federal environmental regulations are met for this project, and the project proceeds, then I believe our community will realize many positives from it. The main topics of concern I've heard consistently from residents during my two years, two terms, sorry, on council, are public safety, tax rates, healthcare, accessibility, transportation, and housing. This project is expected to contribute between $350 and $400 million to our community over the next 25 years. If we consider the positive impacts that investment could have on the items I just listed off that are the most important to our residents, could we realize increased public safety by possibly adding full-time, on-staff firefighters, stabilizing or even reducing our tax rates, increasing accessibility in our community, a rural transportation program for those in need, funding to attract more physicians, funding to support housing initiatives? I don't know how any elected official representing Tancharmar at any level of government can in good faith turn their back on these potential positive outcomes for a community and residents if the environmental concerns at the federal and provincial levels are met. We need to let that process happen. This power production and grid stabilization project is a necessity within our province. It is going to happen somewhere. If we close the door on it here, then the benefits above will fall to another community. This is an opportunity for Tancharmar to take advantage of our essential geographic location, as we always did in the past. Constructing this new generating facility at the intersection of both the already existing natural gas pipeline and the main power transmission line is a responsible decision, both financially and environmentally. To construct this project somewhere else in the province where the pipeline and the transmission line must be extended to reach it would result in even more GHG emissions attributable to the overall impact of this project. That would not be considered an environmentally responsible decision. Being an elected official is tough, even though we find ourselves in situations where no resident is ever going to be happy with any decision we make. That reality in and of itself is the duty to represent we signed up for, to represent all constituents fairly, honestly, and impartially. I take that role very seriously, and I'm proud to represent my community, all 10,000 residents of Tancharmar, not just limited to small groups who are making the most noise on a given topic. Disrespectful engagement, when in public or even during council meetings, coupled with social media attacks, are unfortunately growing concerns for elected officials in society today. We are often targeted as the enemy when we do not align with a certain viewpoint under pressure, and that is terribly unfortunate. We as elected officials cannot assume the role of activists. We are representatives of the people, all the people. It is our responsibility to ensure everyone is heard and that proper processes are followed at all levels of government. It is our responsibility to ask questions and assure accountability via due diligence. It is our responsibility to ask, to not take personal interests into consideration when they could potentially have negative effects on the community. I hope that this council fully understands the implications of taking a public stance and writing letters against this project. Voting to defeat this motion does not mean you support the RIGS project.
Can we please keep the comments from the gallery down?
A vote against this motion indicates three important things. I'm speaking to my fellow counselors. One, that you are cognizant it falls outside the mandate and expertise of this council. Two, that you recognize we have not exercised due diligence, as we have not yet an opportunity to hear both sides. And three, that you understand passing this motion would not represent all of our constituents' interests fairly and objectively.
Counselor Hicks?
Thank you, Mayor Black. I agree with Counselor Esther Brooks. That was a very good, well-written. I think that we need to wait for EIA. I will not support a motion now to go ahead and send a letter.
Counselor Wiggins-Cobell?
Thank you, Mayor Black. We do need to ask the questions. This is a very serious matter that we have before us. So we need to speak with our premier, Susan Holt, and the Minister of Environment. We have to wait to see what the EIA has present to us. Now, whether, and I agree, it should be provincial and federal people that's involved in the environmental studies. It has to be. And that's my thought on this. There's a lot of questions to be answered. We should have the professionals here in front of us to ask the question, not only for our council, but for the people that live in Tancharmar, that live near this, and we have to know that it's what's happening. That's what I have to say on the topic.
Thank you. I see Counselor Finney and Counselor Towers' mics are on. I'll just, I'm just gonna hold on. I'll just say, I'm gonna speak to the motion, and then we'll come back to you guys since you've had an opportunity already. I will be speaking against this motion, but not because I'm in support of or against the RIGS project. I will easily admit that I have concerns about this project and the site that it is being proposed to be built on. These concerns must be properly addressed through the provincial EIA, with consistent and transparent work being done by the technical review committee as part of that process. But as I said, this is not about whether we as council are for or against this project. This comes down to the role and responsibility of council and what is in our jurisdiction to act on. The role and responsibility of council overall is to provide policy direction, oversight, and guidance through making decisions for the benefit of the whole community, being a voice for and of the community, ensuring municipal services are being effectively and efficiently delivered through policy decisions, reviewing and enacting bylaws as authorized under the LGA, and approving the reviewing, and reviewing municipal policies and procedures. More specifically, council is a collective decision-making body that determines services to be provided, approves bylaws and amendments, authorizes the signing of agreements, contracts, and deeds, sets the annual budget and tax rate, reviews and approves borrowing requirements, sets strategic direction for the municipality, and provides direction to the CAO, who provides direction to staff. And that is it. When it comes to jurisdiction, taking a stance on the proposed RIGS project is not in scope. Municipalities need to stay in their lane, as I just laid out, in the roles and responsibilities of council. This motion is urging the immediate cancellation of the project, a power that local governments do not have the authority to dictate. The motion also requests that MB Power prioritizes the use of wind and solar energy supported by the proven battery energy storage system. Local governments cannot dictate how a business, any business, handles their affairs. We do not have the power or authority to do this. It should be noted that MB Power has many references to decarbonize and moving to renewables already embedded in its Energizing Our Future Strategic Plan 2023 to 2035. Is it perfect? Absolutely not. Should they have been investing in renewable energy 20 years ago when people were telling them to? Absolutely, they should have. And this is where we are right now. Tancharmar's role in this is to support our residents in the ways that fall within our lane, making sure that residents' voices are heard, for example, requesting Pro Energy to have an open mic at both of their open houses, and then fighting for one open mic at the last event. Also, sending a compiled list of concerns for the project to higher levels of office. Another way we can support our communities is to ensure that whatever process rolls out, in this case, the EIA, it happens in an appropriate, open, and transparent manner, something that we will continue to address and push for as this process rolls out. Not to mention the support that we have given to our community in sending a letter to Premier Holt and Minister Lapage, requesting that a full, comprehensive EIA be done on this project. Unfortunately, they disagreed and said that the deterministic one will happen instead. The activism to stop this project or to advance it lies in the hands of our provincially and federally elected officials, not with local governments, without the power and authority to act. There has been much work done by the local group against the RIGS project that recognizes this distinction, and they recently had a chance to voice their concerns with letters hand-delivered to Premier Holt, which I celebrate. This is where this work needs to be done and where it needs to remain. Counselor Finney or Tower, I'm not sure which one of you is first. Counselor Finney?
Thank you. I disagree with both Deputy Mayor Esther Brooks, and I disagree with the mayor. First of all, we aren't gonna have the final say in this, because it's gonna be left up to the provincial and federal government. However, as an elected official, I do have, as far as I'm concerned, the right to speak my mind on behalf of the people and represent them and how they feel about this project. Some people here tonight have been talking as if they're experts on it. Well, I'm disappointed in that. The thing is, is that I've heard quite a bit. I've heard the two presentations by the company, and I've also heard some lies from the company. I've read a lot of reports, and I'm sure there's many more to come. Everybody has their own opinion of something. But if I feel strong enough about something, I will write a letter. I will contact the minister. We had Minister Lapage Saturday at the Zone 2 meeting in Marmelou Cook. We had a few questions for him. But overall, my opinion is that this is not a good project, and I'm not an expert, but I've been around long enough to know when someone's trying to pull the wool over our eyes, and I just feel that this is wrong, and so therefore, we need, if that's the case, if we don't have anything to say, then why are we even talking about it now? The thing is, we need to speak our minds and put it out there because we're elected to represent the people of this municipality. And sometimes, you may have, we may have to bend the rules a little bit, even with the policies and bylaws, because the simple fact is, is that sometimes it's not correct. Or if we need to amend it on a certain night, on certain motions that we put forward, we could turn around and do that. But overall, I will continue to speak my mind and how I feel about something and represent the people to the full, my full ability. Thank you.
Just, speaking on process, if this motion passes, the letters that go out come from, that are signed by the mayor, as the representative voice of council, will come from me. If there's any interactions with, you know, maybe the council decides to make a call out to Minister Lapage, for example, or the premier, that also comes from the mayor's office. I don't want it to, the public to believe that each individual counselor is gonna be sending letters. That's not how this works. The mayor, the mayor and clerk would sign and seal a letter that would go to the people who are listed in this, in this motion. So just a, just a point of clarity on process. Counselor Tower?
Thank you, Mayor. To start off with, MB Power tried, and is still trying to pull the wool over people by doing the sleight of hand, don't watch this one while this one does something else. Then you hire a US company to bring their US equipment up here, use their US workers to use US gas, which is gonna be under their control price-wise, which is gonna change what MB Power's doing. If MB Power was so confident this is a great project, I would think that they would push for a full-blown EIA, but they've done all they can to avoid it. And unless we get that kind of an EIA, you're not gonna get all the information back. I am not an expert. I've done a lot of reading online with legitimate sources. I've talked to people who have in this municipality who have the background. They are more experts that can help us. Our advisory committee is there to advise us. But they had nothing good to say about it. If this company was gonna do this properly, they should have written a letter to the council, to the mayor, for council, to have a meeting with us, to sit down saying, here's what we're thinking about doing. But did that happen? No. Where'd we find out about it? Social media. Great place to learn. You know, so I don't call that very transparent. I went to their meetings. I asked their experts at that time for answers, and the proper answers were not coming back out because they hedged on this and hedged on that. I even asked, are you buying this property so you can set up your business? Oh, well, I can't talk about that, because, well, we've already agreed what we're doing, but it's not for public knowledge yet. Again, not very transparent. And if this company builds it, if there is a problem, that company could go bankrupt, and there'd be nothing here to help us. With all those risks, and you want me to still trust them if you're not getting the answers? I tried. I tried and tried, but they continuously tried to avoid it. I listened to the people in Midjig. I heard what they had to say. I went and talked to the company. I heard what they had to say. So I've heard two sides. One was willing to give a presentation, and did. The other one said, yes, we're going to, but said, well, no, not right now, maybe later. So I also feel, it's like when we had a problem with a hospital here, we're gonna close it down, and I first talked about it in council, saying, we've got to do something about this. I was told, it's not in your mandate. And if health isn't part of your mandate of this municipality, then there's a problem. It is part of our mandate. And protecting our citizens is gonna start off, the biggest problem will be in Midjig first, but when the problem happens, it's gonna come down here, it's gonna go into all that. So I am looking at the greater part of that. And I'm sorry, it is part of our mandate to protect our citizens, to speak for them, and if we get a chance to sit in Susan Holt, then we'll get better answers back and forth. But otherwise, I think this motion is a proper motion, and I am voting for it.
So we've had Counselor Tower move the motion, speak to it, and had a follow-up. We've already had Counselor Finney speak to it and had a follow-up, so if this is another follow-up, can it be quick?
I was just gonna say, as a matter of fact, as Counselor Tower said, this was such a great project, why did they wait until a couple weeks and then turn around and tell us? The meeting that has already taken place with the company, I believe the mayor and the deputy mayor met with the company, representatives from them. When I went to the last meeting up at the rink, John McKaisig, who's representing, I can't even remember the name of the company.
Pro Energy.
Pro Energy. The thing is, is that keep an open mind, Bruce, and I am. I'm keeping an open mind. That's why I listened, listened to everything. Then I read reports and the newspaper reports, and then I spoke to people. I'm keeping an open mind. As a matter of fact, now I'm looking forward to when they do come and listen to them again. And then I'll have some questions to, why did you not come forward before? Why did you lie about the fact that the indigenous were not on board with this? That way, I can find out from them and speak to them face-to-face. I think I'm reasonably intelligent. I think I'm smart enough to make my own assessment of people and such a thing as this project, and determine exactly that I don't think it's in the best interest of the people. And whether it's only 40 people against 10,000, who's to say that the other 9,960 are right while those 40 are wrong? No. As a matter of fact, it doesn't matter. The thing is, we're representing all of the people, all of the time, and so therefore, I can't talk to the other 9,960. I've heard from the 40. So I don't know. I'm just talking about the few people I have talked to who are opposed to this, just giving me some good reasons as to why we shouldn't go forward with it. And I'm concerned. This is our community. It doesn't belong to Pro Energy. It doesn't belong to really MB Power. And it doesn't really belong to the province, as far as I'm concerned, because we live here, not them. People in Ottawa don't live here. So any things that go wrong, well, the thing is, it doesn't affect them. So any things that go wrong, well, the thing is, it doesn't affect them. So anyway, that's why I'll be supporting Counselor Tower's motion.
All right. So, all right, so call for the question? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Nay? So nays, Counselor Martin, Deputy Mayor Esther Brooks, myself, Counselor Hicks, and Counselor Wiggins-Collough. Motion defeated. Okay. So moving on to number six, adjournment, moved by Counselor Finney, seconded by Counselor Tower. Thank you, everyone.